Let me turn it off and turn it back on.
I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of November 21st, 2019, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Trustee Miratato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please raise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, first on our list is, I'd like to call to order the public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy, assessment, and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April The public hearing is open. If there's anyone that would like to address this board regarding our annual tax levy, please step forward. Being none, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing. Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Mary, would you start us out with?
Yes, Mayor.
The announcements. You're welcome.
This is the historical house located at 311 Windy Point Drive on December 9th at 6:30 PM. And experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been like 100 years ago. Admission is free and refreshments will be served. Tours of the home will be offered and children will have the opportunity to make a Victorian decoration to take home. For more information on the Victorian Christmas, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5303. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. Trustee Pojak?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel who have or will have currently, they're serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by December 5th. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal contact information like email or social media. For more information, please call 630-909-5327. The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program, SHIP, sponsored site, and offers open enrollment assistance for senior citizens now through December 7th. Our trained volunteer counselors can provide one-on-one assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. SHIP volunteers can provide you with the information you need to make educated decisions about your insurance. This free statewide health insurance counseling service is sponsored by the Illinois Department on Aging. Stop by the center for the senior citizens to pick up your preventive service program information. Please call the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance with your health insurance questions.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Miratato?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next call for the mayor and the village board is scheduled for Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 AM till noon, at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comment, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or the village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. The Village of Glendale Heights has begun a village-wide water meter and reading device replacement program. This project is contracted with Meter Resources Incorporated. It involves the replacement of every water meter and reading device throughout Glendale Heights. A notification will be mailed to customers from Water Resources Incorporated requesting the schedule of an appointment to undertake this work. More information is available at the village's website at www.glandalehighs.org/watermeter. Or you can contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Help spread Christmas cheer to those in Glendale Heights. The Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program will be helping those in need this holiday season by providing meals and gifts to families. Gift tags listing wish-for items are hung on trees located on the first floors of the Civic Center, Center for Senior Citizens, and the Sports Hub. Please attach the gift cab tag to your unwrapped gift donation and return it to the Civic Center or the Center for Senior Citizens by December 6th. For more information on how you can get involved in Christmas sharing, please contact Michelle Cahill at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Breakfast with Santa will be celebrated at Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Saturday, December 14th, from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price of an adult breakfast is $5, and a children's breakfast is $3. Photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $2. No registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Don't miss your chance to tell Santa what is on your Christmas wish list. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights invites the entire community to celebrate the start of the holiday season with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Monday, December 2nd. Santa Claus will be our guest of honor, and holiday decor and lights will illuminate the Civic Center. Enjoy the sounds of the holidays through the performance of Glonside Middle School Choir starting at 7:00 PM. Here in the holiday spirit, as Mayor Linda Jackson, the village board of trustees, and Santa Claus will illuminate the Civic Center complex with just a flick of the switch. Then be sure to stop by the council chambers after the ceremony to warm up with free refreshments. For more information, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5303.
Thank you. Sharon?
Can you read that one? Thanks.
Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you. Come out to Glendale Lakes Golf Club for some Black Friday shopping. On Friday, November 29th, from 9:00 AM to noon only, purchase $100 in gift cards and receive a free round of golf, up to 18 holes, along with a golf cart, for the 2020 season. Some restrictions apply. For more information, or if you have any questions on this great Black Friday deal at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, please call 630-260-0018. To enable an efficient and effective street sweeping schedule, parking on streets is not allowed during the month of November between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on one designated day each week. Color-coded no-parking signs have been posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village's website. For any questions on the street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on holiday lights recycling, call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have a special award to announce. Yes, yes.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting me be here tonight to share with you some exciting news that recently has happened. To give you a little history about how this all was started, in case you didn't know, volunteerism is extremely, extremely important in our senior center. And with Mayor Jackson's volunteer initiative program, what happened from there is we then have the senior center volunteer initiative program. We applied for the award, for the Governor's Hometown Award, this past summer. With the help of administration, the application was put together. A little history of what was on the application that makes us shine and still makes us shine is the seniors have given us in 2019, 18, sorry, 60 individuals gave us 1,848 hours of their time to help us make what we have in our center. We are very, very much grateful, and we always appreciate the time that the seniors give to us. So what we do with them and how they help us, it depends on what their interests are. We have 134 registered volunteers on our books, and any given year, we have anywhere from 61 to 63 that are active. Every single day, there's a volunteer in our building, every day, doing something, whether it is helping in the kitchen, whether it is helping at the front desk, whether it's cooking for a special event, whether it is helping Medicare recipients. What happened is we turned in the application, and we got the notice that we could go and present our application to their judging committee. On September 17th, Isabel, Patty, Pauling, and myself went to Springfield to present our initiative. Little history on how these two were the ones that came to come with me. Isabel Baldwin. That was my signal to David. Isabel, this is Isabel. And Isabel has been a volunteer with us since 2013. She is one of our SHIP counselors, which means she meets with Medicare beneficiaries approximately an hour each, and does meet about three a week, except during open enrollment. She's pretty much with us around the clock right now, to help make sure that they're all educated. Not only is she a SHIP volunteer, she volunteers for a number of our different events, a number of different village events, plus she is one of our 200-plus club winners, which means she has given us over 200 hours of her time since she started volunteering with us. Patty Pauling. David? I forgot, I was supposed to signal him. Patty has been since 2010, our volunteer coordinator on-site. For those of you who don't know Patty, she's got a way of making you interested in everything that's going on. She does the personal training on what they're looking for. So we don't just say, hey, we need somebody to do this. It's you. Patty talks to the seniors, meets with the seniors, to find out what they're interested in, which is why we have so many. She has gone through certification with them so they can work in our kitchen and be there with us when we have programming. So we go, we make our presentation. We did a pretty darn good job. After the 25-minute presentation, they asked all three of us questions. Some of them had nothing to do with our actual volunteer program, but they were so interested in our center itself and how we did things. Eight days later, the official word came in. What it read was, I'm going to read it word for word here. "We are pleased to inform you that the mayor's VIP program for the Center for Senior Citizens' volunteer initiatives program shall receive a Governor's Hometown Project winner award in Healthy Futures." Exciting was not even the good word for it when we received that notice. And then, just last week, on November 14th, Isabel, Nicole, and I, we went to Springfield, and we went to the governor's mansion. We received a personalized plaque for Glendale Heights and a very, very large street sign. I am very proud to present to the mayor and the board with the plaque and the very large street sign.
Oh, is it in front of you?
It's in front of you, right here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for everything you do over there, Debbie.
It's a lot of work.
Isabel.
He wants us to pose.
Okay, we can pose.
Sorry.
Wait. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything you do over there. We have the best senior citizen building.
We do.
Programs, everything.
The street sign will be on display at the center until we figure out, you figure out, where it's going to be actually hung. So that will be in our library.
Okay.
Somehow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
That is great. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Schroeder? Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we waive first reading on new business item number two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waive on new business item two, which is an ordinance to waive bid, authorize the issuance of a notice of award, and authorize the execution of a contract with InstaForm Technologies USA LLC for culvert lining beneath Ardmore Avenue between Alt Gulf Avenue and East Lincoln Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this will be ordinance number 2019-80. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-80 is approved. Number three, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, to waive bid and accept the proposal of Midco Incorporated for a maintenance and service agreement for the video system and the access control system for the Glendale Heights Police Department and Sports Hub facility. This is first reading. Number four, an ordinance providing for the levy, assessment, and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. First reading. Number five, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number One, Glendale Lakes Business Park. First reading. Number six, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Two, Glendale Industrial Park. This is first reading. Number seven, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Three, High Grove East Industrial Park. First reading. Number eight, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Four, High Grove West Industrial Park. That is first reading. Number nine, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Five, Glen Point Business Park. First reading. Number 10, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Six, Polo Club Heights Industrial Park. First reading. Number 11, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Seven, Saco Industrial Park. First reading. Number 12, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2019, and ending April 30th, 2020, in and for the Village of Glendale Heights' Special Service Area Number Eight, Glendale Heights Business Park. And that is first reading. Number 13, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, abatement of the 2019 tax levy for $3 million, General Obligation Bond Series 2006. First reading. Number 14, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement of the 2019 tax levy for $24,210,000, General Obligation Bond Series 2019. First reading. And that takes us back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion would be in order to suspend this meeting before we go into executive session, so that we can go ahead and do the committee of the hall. So if somebody would like to make such a motion, trustee Sullivan?
Motion to suspend executive session?
Suspend the meeting.
Oh, suspend the meeting.
Suspend the meeting.
Yeah.
Second.
And go into the committee of the hall. We have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is suspended for the committee of the hall. Trustee Light?
My turn. Okay. All right. I'd like to call to order the committee of the hall meeting for November 21st, 2019. Mary, could you note who's here?
Noted.
Everybody. Right. Do we have any additions? No additions. All right. Good. Public comment? Would the public like to make a comment on anything? Nope. Okay. All right. Then we will go into our committee recommendations. Plan Commission, a recommendation to approve an amendment to the section 11-4-8 as it pertains to fence locations for restaurants with outdoor dining. This is from the November 12th, 2019 special joint meeting.
Moving to the board with a recommendation to concur. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. All right. A recommendation to approve an amendment to section 11-4-20 to prohibit adult-use cannabis business establishments in all zoning districts. This is also from the November 12th, 2019 special joint meeting. Sharon?
Moving to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah. Okay, I got a question for the first one. Did the fence, did we put in there, it was going to be permanent?
Permanent, yes, we did.
All right, thank you.
Discussion on, second one, too? Anybody? Nope. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're going to go ahead and move that to the board with a recommendation to concur. Okay. Number three, a recommendation to approve an amendment to section 11-4-21 as it pertains to unidentified uses in all zoning districts. This is also from the November 12th, 2019 special joint meeting.
Move that, we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All right. Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? We will go ahead and move this to the board with a recommendation to concur. With no other discussion. Sharon?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah. Meeting is adjourned.
Like to call the village board meeting back to order. Um, next thing on our list is public discussion of agenda items. If anybody in... If anybody would like to come up and discuss anything, please feel free. Okay, next we need a motion to adjourn to exec, executive session to discuss executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee pursuant to the Open Meetings Act five I L C S one twenty slash two C one. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Um, motion is approved. We will be adjourned to executive session, and just to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, Turkey Day, and hopefully we'll see you again before Christmas.